Recording in progress.
Call the meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, our screens are not on.
Commissioner Dibdall?
Here.
Commissioner Wolf?
Here.
Commissioner Wire?
Here.
Commissioner Burish?
Here.
And Mr. Mayor Lindsay?
Here. You have before you the agenda for this evening.
Motion to approve the agenda is presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Is there anything anyone wants to discuss on the consent calendar? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Under unfinished business, second reading of ordinance sixteen eighty-one, amend appropriation ordinance number sixteen seventy-two. Jameson or Amy, you want to take that one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the second reading of an ordinance that appropriates thirty-one thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars to be used towards maintenance on a cross, a railroad crossing improvement. This was not budgeted for this year because it was originally proposed in twenty twenty-two, was budgeted for the last couple of years, and the railroad just got to it this year, but we hadn't continued to budget for that. So this is a small change to our appropriation ordinance from last year, so we can utilize those funds for that purpose. No change from first reading.
Questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance number sixteen eighty-one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Under new business, resolution twenty twenty-five dash nineteen, adopt the powers and duties of the mayor and the commissioners. Jameson, would you like to address this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Each year, we approve a new resolution that establishes the roles and responsibilities of our elected officials. And so we did that back in May after the election, but now we have two new members who filled vacancies recently. And so this updates that resolution to reflect the roles and responsibilities of our new membership. The four roles for our commissioners would be Jenny Wolf, finance, Kelly Dibdall, public safety; Dan Burish, public works; Andrew Wire, utilities. The resolution does also specify various other boards and committees responsibilities of all four commissioners, as well as the mayor, but those are, I think, the most significant roles that are filled by this resolution. I'll stand by for any questions.
Questions, comments? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash nineteen. Adopt the powers and duties of the mayor and commissioners.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And number nine, consider approval of change order number two, Madison Water Improvement Segment Four, Metro Construction Incorporated. Jameson, Ryan, you want to take this one?
This is the final change order for our segment four, and I'll have Ryan go over the details.
Yeah, so this is being presented as the final adjustment for quantities on the project. So this change order reconciles any overrun and underrun quantities. So this results in a decrease in the contract total of nineteen thousand, roughly three hundred dollars. That brings the total cost of the project incorporating this change order to about eight hundred and six thousand dollars.
Questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to consider the approval of change order number two, Madison Water Improvement Segment Four to Metro Construction in the amount of nineteen thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars and fifteen cents. Savings, yes.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number ten, consider approval of change order number three, Madison Water Improvement Segment Five A, Asphalt Surfacing Company Incorporated. And again, Jameson and Ryan, what?
We'll have Ryan take this as well.
So this change order, there's three components to it. There's three RFPs, or request for price, that we had asked the contractor for. One was an additional bid item to furnish and install three-quarter inch red rock on a property on Fourth Street. Additional material was required at that property due to some great changes in the curb and gutter during construction. The existing red rock that he had was contaminated both during that project, as well as the City Hall project. They had parked some asphalt equipment over there, and so this ended up being a bit more quantity than we were expecting. The second component was to add some type A riprap and a temporary water barrier and de-watering in the creek on the east side of Union Avenue. We've had a longstanding issue there of erosion from the fifty-four inch RCP storm sewer pipe. Now, we've added a couple of pipes to that outlet, and we think that this would be the correct time to stabilize those flared ends discharging into the creek. We're getting a lot of erosion. So we feel like this price that was given to us by the contractor is a good price. We think we would pay more for it if we were to hire that separately. And last was adding bid items for two eight-inch forty-five degree bends on the water line. City records were old milearm maps. They weren't GIS or anything. They weren't, you know, very accurate. So the planned tie-in locations were based on those old city records, and it turned out that the water main didn't align correctly, and so we had a forty-five over to meet with that existing water line. And that's the third component. So this change order would be an increase of about thirty thousand dollars, bringing that contract price, incorporating the change order to about four million four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars.
Questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to consider approval of change order number three, Madison Water Improvement Segment Five A, Asphalt Surfacing Company, Inc., in the amount of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and five cents.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. But ma- uh, motion carries. Number eleven, authorize signature for the MDS GLG three forty-six double oh twenty-nine twenty-seven twenty-twenty-five, Madison Municipal Airport. And that should say authorize the mayor to sign. Ryan, do you want to address this one?
Sure. So this is very similar to the grant agreement that was brought to you at the last meeting. That was an AIP grant, or an Airport Improvement Program grant. This is a AIG, or Airport Improvement Grant. This would be for Phase Two, construction reconstruct the taxi lane. It's our current project under construction. Reminder that the FAA pays ninety-five percent of the allowable cost, and so this obligation, maximum obligation that the United States is offering to pay the city is one hundred sixteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. And then the state also kicks in two and a half percent of the project, and the local is responsible for two and a half. So this signature would just allow then the FAA to give the money to the state, and then the state gives the money to locals, and we can then pay the contractor.
Questions or comments?
No concerns about the funds for this grant possibly being cut?
No. So this would be obligating those grants. We have some carryover money from last year as well. Our funding looks good. They've... So last year and this year, they paid ninety, ninety-five percent of the project. Typically, they pay ninety, and so not only is the, have the grants come through, but they've actually increased their amount that they've been willing to pay.
Other questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to authorize signature on the grant agreement as listed in the agenda for the Madison Municipal Airport.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number twelve, review the twenty twenty-six nonprofit funding requests. Jameson, you want to address this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the first things we do when we plan to, when we're preparing for the next year's budget, is to request the, or to open up for requests from the public for various nonprofit and other part organizations to request funding from the city, and we like to put that in front of you earlier before the budget process starts. So today, we're not looking for action on the, on any items. There's no motion that's needed, but we are looking for commission directions so that staff can budget accordingly for these nonprofit requests. So coming up, we have, the first reading of the budget won't be until October twentieth, so that is two months from now, and that gives us two months to finalize the budget and to incorporate the allocations, as you would like to see, fit for the nonprofit requests. This year, we received requests of four hundred and eighty-eight thousand and fifty dollars, it looks like. And so that's an increase of twenty-one thousand five hundred and fifty from what was approved last year. I'll note that last year, there was a request, various entities requested more funding or new funding last year, and due to the uncertain times with the ballot initiative regarding sales tax on grocery items last year, the commission wanted to keep it flat to what we had been used to, so it was the same as the prior year, except for a one thousand dollar new addition for funding for Habitat for Humanity. So this year, again, the requests are four hundred and eighty-eight thousand fifty dollars. We do have a challenging budget year ahead of us. We released some press releases, so the public has been aware as well of our budgeting process for next year. So when we look at the general fund, and that's where these nonprofit funds come from, for next year, we are being very cautious with the budgets that we're creating for next year, for two reasons. One, the expenses that we've seen in our general fund have increased the last several years. We've had a lot of projects that we've completed. We've had different improvements in equipment and deferred maintenance that we have caught up on. But we do know that the economic outlook, and this is the second part, for the future, is more uncertain each year. Sales tax is increasingly volatile tax that's very much tied to the economy and consumer spending, and we are seeing a slowdown in the sales tax, not just for us, but around the state. And then, secondly, with the property tax, the legislature has a summer study, and they are looking at ways to reduce property tax burden to taxpayers, which works out great for taxpayers, and we'll see where they come up with next legislative session. However, that does come at a cost for municipalities and other taxing entities who use those revenues for various expenses. So in case property revenues, property tax revenues decrease in the future, and in case sales tax revenues decrease in the future, we're being very cautious with creating the budget for next year. So right now, we are looking at the general fund needing to be cut back by five to ten percent from the twenty twenty-five appropriated levels, and there are some areas that can't be cut. Debt service is a good example of that. When we take on projects and need to pay off the loans, like we've been speaking about, we have to meet those terms. And so there are some aspects of the general fund that simply can't be cut back. The ones that do have the flexibility to be adjusted, we are looking at closer to ten to fifteen percent reduction because they have to be able to make up for the components of the general fund that can't be cut back. So I know it's a lot of information thrown at both you as elected officials, as well as the public, but we are in a challenging budget situation. We know that cities around the state, and as well as states around the country, are all looking at similar situations, and we're all being very cautious and also prudent with taxpayer dollars. So with that, I'll open up for discussion and allow you guys to provide whatever direction you'd like to staff as far as how you'd like to handle the nonprofit fund request for twenty twenty-six. I'll stand by for questions.
Questions or comments?
I guess I'll kick it off. Yeah, obviously, considering what Jameson is stating with these nonprofit requests and the expected shortfall with the budget, hopefully, we, the numbers start to look better with sales tax revenue and everything else. But I guess from the position I'm looking at, some of these things are going to probably look to be expected. I would say maybe around a ten percent cut. I would look at doing that on these items before I would be looking at removing staff or cutting other areas that may affect the public in a little bit greater of a way until we can get our books in line. But I don't think we need to make a decision right now until we have a full view of what that looks like from that standpoint, but I just want to make all these organizations aware that there's going to be some tough decisions that are going to be made in the future. We're going to be paying off debts. We're going to be tightening our belts and getting ready for the future so that we can maintain our infrastructure, maintain our services. And unfortunately, some of these things might have to take a little bit of a cut for that to happen. So that obviously isn't something that is set in stone, and we'll keep looking at ways to limit where we have to make reductions, but as far as I'm thinking, everything's on the plate right now.
Other comments?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Burish that these are wonderful organizations that enhance our city's safety and quality of life and great things, but if we're looking to cut five to ten percent within our own city budgets, I think it's prudent for us to certainly not do any increases with the nonprofit funding.
Other comments?
Mr. Mayor, are we going to have the organizations talk to us today or in the future? Or how do we want to approach that?
We have some of the organizations here today, and that, you know, if they would like to come up and speak, and that, I would open that up. Please come. And then there's a little red, a little button there that's been on your red light. Yeah, it's just right there in the front.
You gotta kind of hold it.
Just not cooperating.
It's slightly cushiony is the way I'd describe it.
A little bit harder.
So you will feel it move a little bit.
Just hold it down until it turns red.
Don't feel bad. You're not the only one.
It's kind of weird, yeah.
And it's too bad you can't see the light unless you're moving your head, so... Oh, maybe it's not just... There it is.
You just gotta move it a little bit.
We make sure to put the difficult mic up front just for this reason.
Like a computer strike any key.
There we go. My name is Julie Rue. I am the executive director of the Lake County Museum. I want to apologize my former president, Danny Crispy Griffin couldn't be here today. He had coaching requirements that he needed to do. So I'll just go into it and let you know if you have any questions. The Lake County Historical Society...
I might ask you to pull the mic a little bit closer. I don't know if it's picking up very well.
There we go. Is that better?
Yes.
The Lake County Historical Society respects the request, twenty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. This is an increase of eleven, over eleven thousand dollars to support the continued growth and success of the Lake County Museum. The requested funds will fulfill key objectives in the Historical Society's strategic plan and cover increasing operational expenses that grants and sponsorships will not fully address. Specifically, the funds will be utilized to retain qualified and talented staff, retain a new staff member whose sole purpose is to care for the three-dimensional and archival collections, which will move the Lake County Historical Society and museum successfully into the future. The funds requested will be used for several critical purposes to enhance museums' operations and offerings. Retain staff, as I said. The collections manager will care for and organize our three-dimensional and archival collections, ensuring their preservation and accessibility to the public. Develop and improve programs and exhibits. In twenty twenty-six, as you're aware, it's the semi-sesquicentennial for the two hundred and fifty years anniversary of the United States, and that's where our programming will focus on. How do we celebrate the two hundred and fifty years? We will enhance, like I said, our current exhibits and create new engaging programs to attract and educate visitors. I want to point out, all of our educational programming that goes out to schools does follow the state's new social studies standards. So we are in line with that to help the teachers do their job. We want to implement new initiatives like focus groups in twenty twenty-six to gather community feedback for continuous improvement. We need support for operational expenses to cover essential operational costs to maintain the museum's day-to-day activities and ensure smooth functioning. We need to help advertise events, promote our events through various channels, including local platforms, social media, and we are also trying digital marketing. This will increase attendance, but more importantly, will increase membership. And we encourage museum visitors, improve visitor experience by extending the time they spend in the museum, ensuring a welcoming invite. We've already seen an increase in visiting time from fifteen minutes to fifty minutes. These targeted uses of funds will help us enhance the museum's overall functionality, attract more visitors, and secure the museum's future growth and sustainability. Thank you for letting me advocate for the museum. And I'll leave these, like, to Amy, their postcards, and they're tell of our events in the next couple of months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions while Julie's here?
What is your annual budget?
Our annual budget is about a hundred and eleven thousand. And as you noted, we've had a, quite a, our membership has gone down from previous years, and so we're not going to meet our goal, and that's just because of that economic downturn. We have the number of members, and we haven't even increased that, but the amount of their memberships have decreased.
Thank you. What other sources of funding, then, do you have besides the city and memberships?
The county, and then we do sponsorships, like, the big one is our ice cream social, First Bank and Trust, and DQ sponsored that whole event. We've got over two hundred and thirty-six people there this year. It's a friend building, a thank you to the community to get our name out, to get some notoriety, and it really, we had one seventy-seven last year, so that's quite an increase.
So you don't get any funding directly from the state?
No. And we don't get any funding from DSU. We're on campus, but we don't get any funding from them. They do, they do pay for utilities, and they just paid for a new group for us, so...
Other questions or comments? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else you'd like to address, the commissioner?
First, Eric, you have to thank Julie for turning the mic on because you don't have to do that, so, yeah.
Eric, partners with the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, Mayor, and city commissioners. I know this is always everybody's favorite time of year, budget season. But as far as the chamber is concerned, we are here asking for an increase for twenty twenty-six funding as well, as what I like to consider the chamber one job or one duty is basically the marketing arm of the, of the city, showcasing our community to visitors, potential residents, businesses, which in turn then makes it a revenue generator. The chamber is a revenue generator for the city. The funding that we receive from the city directly supports a wide range of marketing initiatives, co-op programs with Southeast South Dakota Tourism, the State Tourism Office, investments in multiple print and digital marketing platforms, along with the Discover Madison app, which engages both residents and visitors. And just last month, we had our home screen buttons on the app, had over three thousand clicks on them. One example of the co-op programs with Southeast South Dakota Tourism is a little flyer that I gave Amy to pass out. It's a new program. We've partnered with Brookings and Madison and Southeast South Dakota Tourism to do a vacation giveaway, and they'll draw for that in December. It opened up this spring. They'll draw one winner for a family giveaway to Brookings and Madison. In Madison, they'll get some mad money. They'll get a Galen's popcorn gift card. They'll get a two-night stay at the Best Western, and then they'll get passes to Prairie Village. All four of those entities are members of Southeast South Dakota Tourism. But on top of, the best part about that program is we'll get one family here because of that drawing, but then we will also get contact information for everybody that registered so that we can push out all of our information to all of those email addresses. When it opened up in the spring, in March, they had over a thousand people that registered for that giveaway just in March, so we're hoping for a lot of email addresses that we can push information about Madison to. We also organize major community events, such as Madison Magical Christmas, Downtown Mad Town, and then the new one last year, this year, the spring, was America's Hometown Volleyball Showdown, where we brought four Division One volleyball teams to town. We also do things like Burger Brawl and the Shop Local programs. And for those types of events, a lot of the expenses come out of that funding that we receive from the city. To give you a few numbers on some of our events, Burger Brawl in May had over four thousand burgers sold. Downtown Mad Town generates approximately a hundred thousand dollars in gross revenue just from the food trucks, which then they pay sales tax on. The chamber consistently sells over a hundred thousand dollars a year in mad money. Now, we don't get a hundred thousand dollars. That in turn gets used in our local businesses. Those cards can only be used at chamber members. And then our March Punch Card tally was just shy of a million dollars in the March Punch Cards that were, that were turned in. So as you can guess, all of those types of marketing and events, just like everything else, increases their expenses. And so a majority of the increase would go towards keeping those programs going. As far as sales taxes concerns, it's gone up every year since I started tracking it in twenty seventeen, and just, I don't know, within the last hour or two, the July numbers came out, which was up a hundred and sixty thousand dollars compared to last July, which now pushes us over, I believe that pushes us ahead of where we were at last year at the same time in sales tax revenue. So, you know, as we look to finalize our, our budget... So, you know, as we, we look to finalize our, our budget also in 2026, I would ask you to strongly take a look at the Chamber's request and, and our increase ask. Any questions?
Questions at all? Comments?
I'll ask a question. Thanks for coming. So the Chamber owns a number of actions in the 2026 strategic plan. Are these funds critical to achieving any of those that have been assigned to the Chamber?
You know, I, I think in a, some of them, yes, just with some of the goals and strategies that, that, like you had said, that we've been kind of tasked with. Not only that, but trying to aesthetically make Egan Avenue look a little bit better with some, some things that we can do in the short time, short term before it is up for reconstruction in 2030. So we increased lighting, maybe some temporary bump outs. We've talked about some different murals on some, some side of some of the buildings downtown. So different things like that. I think some of this funding could certainly go towards helping Egan Avenue look a little bit better.
Other questions or comments? Well, I want to thank you for all the events that you do push, you know, that bring people to Madison.
What, what's your annual budget?
$400,000 to $450,000.
And your funding mechanisms?
So roughly a quarter of it comes from the city funding. About another quarter of it comes from membership dues, and then the rest of it is, you know, some of the events that we put on, some referral programs that we have. So for example, we have a, with our Mad Money, the company that we work with on Mad Money, if I can convince another community to sign up with them, then we get some funding back from, from that. You know, the trips overseas that we've started the last couple of years, we get a referral dollar amount from each one of those people that sign up for those trips. There's a lot of different pots that we are making that budget work from. Thank you. I mean, there's, there's some chambers in our kind of six-state region that we work with that are 50% to 60% city-funded.
Other questions or comments?
I have a question, Eric. How many employees are at the Chamber?
Two and a half.
Thank you.
That includes myself.
Thank you.
Not as a half, but I'm.
Other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
It really doesn't bend. You just have to, you know, talk towards it.
Okay, Mark Eben with the Senior Citizen Center, and this is a treasurer, which, which is also my wife is with me, so if you need numbers, she's got, she's got numbers. First of all, I'd like to start off by thanking the commissioners in the past years for supporting the Senior Citizen Center. We've gotten some monies from you, and we've been able to do some wonderful things for the seniors at the Senior Citizen Center with the monies. And hopefully, we've all been able to see it going by, we've seen the changes that we've made with the monies that we have gotten from you. So I'm not here to ask for more money than what I've gotten in the past. I'm only here to ask for what you have given us in the past, but I can make that, I can make that work, and I can, and I can do more product and, and still make some improvements on that one.
Mark, I've seen some of the improvements. Do you want to just kind of address some of the things that you guys have done since then?
Well, a few years back, it was a baby new tin shed building, and now we've put siding on it. We've completed that project this year on the north side, and so now it's, it's all been sided and wrapped and painted. And all of that labor is putting the siding on, Jeanie and I put the siding on the east side ourselves, and when it come to the bevel ends, I said, we're not going to, we're not going to have a scap, we're setting up scap, we're putting on the siding. So we did have the contract to come in and do three of the sides of the builds, but I've painted everything myself, and I'm not trying to, too, I won't call them, but I've put a lot of work and a lot of energy into this building, inside and outside, painting and new ceiling tiles and lighting, and so it's, it's been good money for you. It's not my building, it's, it belongs to residents, it belongs to, whoever is a member of the Senior Citizens. So, but we're, like everyone else, are, you know, no removal costs more, laundry, you know, they have a load cost more, and, you know, everything's going on. So I'm not asking for more, but I appreciate you possibly in, and I know it's tough, you know, you're in a tough situation, but very good use of your money. I guess if you have any questions.
Questions or comments from the commission?
Approximately how many seniors do you serve, I don't know, monthly or annual basis?
It's, it's, am I close enough? Am I close enough?
You are.
You're good.
We've got, when we, when we first joined, about three years ago, there were probably about 24 members. We now have over 130 members, and we probably serve an additional 200 to 300 more that aren't official members. They just come out and use the facility that's there without joining and paying the membership fee. And some of the comments that we've heard in the last three years since we've been there is what an improvement your dollars have made.
Excellent, yeah.
The American Legion holds their meetings out there and that, so every month and that I'm out there, and I've seen the improvements that they've made on the buildings, so.
The, the building had been ignored for decades, like no improvements, and so now we're taking the dollars and using it for materials and then just volunteering our time.
Other questions or comments?
I just have one more thing. We've got bathrooms that still need to be done, we've got a kitchen that still needs to be done.
Yeah, that, that's, I guess, kind of what the monies that we would get this year is neither one of the bathrooms are, are handicap accessible, and I'd like them to, I'd like to at least bring them up to the speed so they are handicap accessible. It seems silly not to have handicap accessible buildings in the Senior Citizen Center. It was an old building, and it's, you know, it hadn't had a lot of care the last 25 years, and we're just trying to bring it up to speed, so. But that would be some of the monies that we would be using for is the bathrooms. And like you said, there's, there's, there's a couple other projects we would like to do with the building upgrade. We appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Come on, please.
See if I can manage the microphone any better. I'm Chris Francis. I'm with the Madison Area Arts Council. I've been with the Arts Council now going on 18 years. Organization that's had the Brick House downtown for just over 16 years now. We offer a variety of free-to-attend programs throughout the year. We have about 25 or 30 programs. That includes free concerts. We have poetry and writer gatherings. We host visual artists throughout the year, including middle school, high school art shows. We do six of those each year, four with the middle school and two with the high school. We also occasionally host Dakota State University's art program for their showcases as well. Kind of do a little bit of everything when it comes to the arts, so. We always appreciate the support of the city. I've asked around from former members and directors how many years the city has supported us, and no one really knows, which is a great comment to have. We, we're very thankful to the city council and, of course, the mayor. It's been a lot of years, a lot of history. We've been around since 1964. We are the state's oldest arts council. We are one of the oldest in the Midwest. We have a legacy here. I know the state arts council calls us the legacy arts council for good reasons, but over those years, we have hosted literally thousands of artists and events and a great many of our Madison community, of course, too. Yeah, it's, I always say the arts council, it's, we put on a good show, so. Again, thank you for your support. We're not asking for an increase again this year. I think we do pretty well with what we have. It works for us with the right size for Madison, what we can sustain. Our facility, of course, has always has needs, but we seem to do a little bit each year, make it a little bit better than we have it. So, thank you. Any questions?
Questions or comments? There was a time in that it was in City Hall.
Yes, the former Firehouse Gallery. We had that in the 1990s.
Yes.
I think from 1990 to 96. Before the police station, it was an art gallery. Before that, it was an old firehouse, so. Our name, the Brick House, is a reference to the old Firehouse Gallery, so we moved from fire to bricks, so. Yeah, we've had the Brick House downtown now for just over 16 years, so it's, it's a nice front door for us and the community. We're always trying to make little improvements to it. If you've not been to one of our programs, we have, the season's just starting, we already had a Bluegrass show a few weeks ago. Do come out and make it out and see where your, where your dollars go, so.
Questions, other questions or comments? If not, thank you for being here.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Hey, I don't see anyone else that I think would want to speak right now, so with that, any questions or comments from the commission at this point on the nonprofit funding request?
Jamison, when's that first hearing date again? Or review?
October 20.
Yes, October 20. Yeah, October 20th. We, we will have a budget session before that. I should, that's probably important to notice. So, Amy, remind me, which meeting is the budget session? Is that the second meeting in September?
Yes.
Okay, so one month from today, we'll have the budget session, and that'll go over the draft budget, get feedback on a number of areas, and then two months from today will be the first reading of the budget ordinance with the second reading planned, then for the first meeting in November. So we do appreciate any direction that you have today, if you want to continue discussion on another agenda before the budget session, if you want to talk about it then, like we can certainly do that, but of course, the more, the more information we can plug into the draft now, the, the easier it makes it for us as we're putting that, that draft together for your review.
I guess, from my perspective, you know, again, all great entities, it's going to be hard. You know, we don't want to pick and choose, having to pick between these entities, so it's going to be, it's going to be a tall task. I think at this time, you know, I'd like to see preliminary budgets with the 2025 numbers that we used, and go, go accordingly once we get more budget numbers.
Okay.
My opinion.
Got it. Anyone else?
And I would, I would agree with that. I, I think, you know, use the 2025 numbers that we have this year that we already know how it fits in the budget, and then when we look at what we have to make as adjustments to the city's general fund portion, then, you know, take that consideration so that it's, you know, equitable.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, we really just need to see where that puts us to. There's a lot.
Sure.
I mean, we really can't make any decisions based on just these numbers in front of us today.
The numbers that we did plug into the budget that we're playing with that puts us at the 12% to 15% variance in the general budget does include the flat numbers from 2025. So with 2025 numbers plugged into the 2026 budget for nonprofit funding, the general fund in certain departments are looking at a 12% to 15% cut.
Other questions at this time?
I'd agree with that. Just go with that for now until we find out more information. Otherwise, if there's any other public entities or nonprofit entities that want to get in touch and speak out, as well as further public input, feel free to speak up, so.
Okay. We will work with that for direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 13, August 2025 finance updates.
A few things to note this month is we launched the new capital budget submission process.
We don't have the slides up yet.
Oops, I'm sorry.
Okay. Got them?
Ta-da. We launched the new capital budget submission process via ClearGov to streamline capital planning and improve long-term forecasting. Department heads have received training, and the system is live today. A comprehensive review of sales tax revenue accounting within the Tyler system is underway to correct backend processes and ensure accurate fund movements. This review is critical due to the complexity and volume of internal transactions. Due to ongoing audit delays, we are exploring transition options to ensure timely completion of audits. Engagement discussions are ongoing with potential firms and departments aiming to reduce general fund budget by 5% to 10% in 2026. This is due to increase in projects in the past few combined with potential decrease to sales tax and property tax revenues. We are currently 58.3% through the year. Our cash on hand, general cash, $9.06 million, investment, $6.1 million, checking, $2.12 million, money market, $687, other, $250K, restricted, restricted cash, $633K.
Where do those amounts compare to, say, like, 12 months ago?
They'd be, they'd be down. So we, we spent a lot of cash down on, on various projects. Some projects we've saved up for, for a few years until the, the cash is down. I think when Amy started, boy, in spring of '24, we probably had about 12 million cash on hand, and so now we'd be down to nine. But again, some of that's been for, on this building or other projects that, that needed that cash.
Not necessarily addressing this. Have we heard when our audit may be back?
I have been told the end of August.
Other questions?
These are our revenue guidelines. As I mentioned earlier, we're 58.3% through the year, so this is a helpful benchmark for us to look at. However, actual results may vary reasonably, fall above or below depending on the timing of specific revenue and expense streams, so I wanted to point that out. I know this can be a little bit confusing as we look at these numbers. They do not always occur evenly or at the same time throughout the year, so I think they can be very skewed, and I just wanted to mention that. Certain revenues, property taxes, fundings, other major revenue sources come in lump sums and quarterly installments, while utilities and surcharges flow in monthly. Expenditures such as insurance premiums and capital purchases are front-loaded or back-ended, so at either end of the year, they're not spread evenly.
Amy, with that being said, do you happen to have our July 2024 numbers, just to compare that 83% of the revenue?
I do.
You don't have to get it right now.
Yeah, I'd be happy to get that to you, though. I can actually put them in a comparison for you.
Yeah, I'd be curious year over year, just because the revenue sources don't come in, like you said, evenly.
Sure. I will put that on my list to get out to you guys. Any other questions on the revenue guidelines? I I can additionally add that revenue is a bit higher on the one-on-one primarily due to the current year reimbursements received from the LAIC. Those amounts total two million one hundred and seventy-two thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. If we take those out, it still puts us at the fifty-seven point three percent, so we're in pretty good alignment there.
Yeah, and so that's not going to be the same as twenty twenty-four then, so this will be.
We can, we can always provide year-over-year numbers, because I think that does provide, you know, one one data point or one perspective. But I always have to issue some caution with that as well, because every year is so different. And we have, I mean, Ryan, was it last year or this year we had, you had twenty-seven projects on your list, or?
Last year.
Was that last year? So I I think this year maybe a few less than that, but there's there's a lot of activity that goes on. So those year-over-year numbers can be misleading unless you start putting a lot of asterisks on them of caveats of this and that. Doesn't mean we can't provide. I think it does show a useful snapshot, but just one snapshot.
Other questions, comments?
Expenditure guideline on this. You'll also see expenses are higher on behalf of the LAIC here as well in the amount of two million six hundred fourteen thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-four cents. When adjusted out, it brings us back into alignment, that fifty-seven point three percent. The Fund Six-O-Two, which is the water fund, also is lower than budgeted. This is primarily due to long-term debt that was budgeted with only limited funds advanced. Five million one hundred and twenty-one thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars has been budgeted. Three hundred and forty-five thousand six hundred and twenty-seven dollars received. And then in the Six-O-Four Fund, you'll also see that it is lower than budgeted. It's primarily, again, due to long-term debt that was budgeted with only limited funds advanced. Those would be drawdowns in the amount of two million two hundred and twenty-nine thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars budgeted, and we've received two hundred and ninety-four thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-four cents.
Other questions or comments?
Profit loss? Year-to-date? Sales tax. Our numbers did come in this afternoon. They are not reflected in here. This is an interesting month. Jamison, do you want to?
Yeah, I have those here, so as Eric alluded earlier, he's dealing our thunder. Thanks, Eric. No, I'm just kidding.
I I do have them available.
Yeah, and so I I think I think Eric said the same thing to me, but I I probably checked his numbers about twenty times today. The the mayor and Ryan will attest that I was in the car and I checked every half an hour. But it used to be that the state was was very consistent about getting their sales tax numbers in between by the twelfth and the fifteenth of the month. In the last few months, we haven't made it to our our second meeting because they've been late, I think, the last three months. But for Madison, we were up forty-two and a half percent. So the July collections was about five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, which is good. We certainly love seeing those positive numbers, but that speaks again towards the sporadic nature of the sales tax. And and these year-over-year snapshots don't take into perspection, uh, take into account late filings, corrected filings, things like that. So I think with this number, we are now positive year-to-date. I haven't run the exact numbers, but I think that should push us over, which is what I was expecting to happen as the year went on, because that that April number certainly impacted us earlier in this year when last year's April was was so high. So definitely a positive number, and I was happy to see that come through. And so now I'm going to start giving my my twelve-month warning next year in August. When you see the July year-over-year, we were up forty-two percent this year. We'll probably be down thirty percent next year. So it it's, that's just how the 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 sales tax changes month over month, and it can it can make it hard to look at those monthly projections.
April and June together, there's your forty percent drop, and now it's coming back, so it's pretty much evening out.
Yeah, April in twenty twenty-four was up fifty percent. So obviously, a big number, probably some late filings, some corrections there from some employers. And so this year, being down thirty-two percent, just meant that we were still up. We were only up eight thousand dollars from twenty twenty-three, but we were still up. So it it's numbers. You can you can turn them and look at them however you want. But ultimately, we are looking at, we are moving positive as we are moving into the latter half of the year. Sales tax is looking better, but I I still feel and see this in other cities' numbers as well that economically, the state's slowing down, consumer spending is starting to slow, and that will impact sales tax for everybody.
I can give you the total for two thousand twenty-five is three million thirty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars, and it brings us at one point nine two percent overall.
Positive.
Positive.
All right. Any other questions or comments? You got the next one going?
Yeah, it's just the same graph as last month, so we haven't added any data to that, so. Any other questions?
No questions? Do we have any public comments? I think everyone wanted to speak has. Under announcements, next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, September second, twenty twenty-five, at five thirty, due to Labor Day Monday. And then number fifteen, appointment to the Planning Commission available to fill the vacancy, ending in twenty twenty-six. So if you're interested in serving on any of the city commission, planning and zoning, or any of the other commissions and that that we have out there, please go to our website and fill out an application. And at this point in time, seeing nothing further, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify, saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And thank you, everyone, for being here today.
I have a question.
Certainly. If you've got a question, you can ask it.
Are we supposed to come back in September or are we not, like, we not need us anymore?
People should come to every city commission meeting, right?
Yes.
You're certainly welcome back anytime, and I think they will continue budgeting.